City Council to order for Monday, December 13th. I'll rise for the pledge.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. We lost a few people in the last, since we last met. Former building inspector Jim Callahan and former Corporation Counsel Joe O'Connor. Thank you. Carmen Roca.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, all nine members are present and in chambers. Item number three, Mayor's Address, Mr. Talon.
Good evening, Council President and Counsel. Mayor couldn't be here, so I'm here to give his report. Not that long ago, I reported to you that the city was making an insurance change. So I'm happy to report that all the employees in the city have now gone through the open enrollment process, and we're told that there was no issues with that. So it went very well. Every employee should be expecting to get their insurance cards by the end of next week. And as you probably are aware from what we've talked about in the past, we're expecting that this change could save the city a minimum of $500,000, and hopefully if things go well, it actually should be quite a bit more than that. And should have very little impact on any employee's coverage, and in fact, the impact that it does have should be all positive from what we've seen so far. So we're excited about that. We do want to encourage employees to download the United Healthcare app, so they can also have an electronic version of their, of their card as well. So just want to get that out on public record for everybody. I want to talk briefly about two of the resolutions that you have in front of you today in regards to the vaccination policy for the city. These resolutions essentially do two things, and I'm going to keep this very short, the short version of it. I know everybody's familiar with the resolutions. You have them in your packet, and I'm sure you've read through them. But they essentially do two things. They require all new employees for the city of Hammond to be fully vaccinated, and all employees that are trying for a departmental transfer or a promotion to be fully vaccinated. Despite, despite lots of different information that is given out there, the fact is this: Fully vaccinated people are less likely to get COVID, they are less likely to spread the virus, and they are also less likely to have severe effects from COVID if they are vaccinated. Those are facts despite all the information that's thrown out there by a lot of people. So really, what this resolution is really doing is trying to protect city employees, city residents, and our entire community, as our employees interact with the residents of the city of Hammond in lots of different ways. So if they're better protected, the community's better protected as well. That is the very quick and short version of those resolutions, but I just wanted to say that briefly. We had the Mayor's Night Out last week, and we talked about the train results and heard lots of different opinions from different people in regards to the survey that we did. I'm not here to necessarily rehash everything that was talked about at that meeting. I just want to be publicly read the results from the survey that we had as of Mayor's Night Out. We had 630 responses from the residents in that area, so I'm going to give the, the results of that relatively quickly. The first question on the survey was how often are you impacted by a stop train in Hessville? Never was 3%. Monthly was 8%. Weekly was 29%. Daily was 38%. And more than once a day was 22%. And I am rounding if it was five or higher, obviously, or four and lower. So that gives you that most people, in this case, about 59% are daily or more than once a day impacted by. How strongly do you believe that the trains, the stop trains in Hessville are an issue that you would like your city government to address and solve? Very strong is 73%. Somewhat strong was 11%. Neutral was 4%. Not that strong was 4%. Not strong at all was 8%. So again, how strongly do you believe that stop trains in Hessville are an issue? About 85% either said somewhat strong or very strong. Are you in favor of the city partnering with the state of Indiana and the railroad companies to build a bridge to help eliminate on-the-street crossings and to help solve trains blocking intersections in Hessville? Yes, 81%. No, 19%. That's it. So quite a few people said yes, they're in favor. How strongly are you in favor of the bridge being built? Very strongly in favor, 64%. Somewhat in favor, 12%. Neutral, 3%. Not that much in favor, 3%. Not at all in favor, 18%. So how strongly? 76% are either somewhat in favor or very strongly in favor of the bridge being built. The proposed pathway to the bridge is through the undisturbed wooded areas, sometimes referred to as Briar East Woods, that will result in hundreds of trees being cut down and habitat disturbed. Knowing this, how strongly are you in favor of the bridge being built? Very strongly in favor, 47%. Somewhat in favor, 16%. Neutral, 5%. Not that much in favor, 5%. And not at all in favor, 26%. Lastly, do you believe that building the bridge is a good investment by the city and that it will positively impact the quality of life in Hessville? Yes, 75%. No, 25%. Those are the results from the survey. Those are numbers. It's not opinions. Those are the people who responded, and obviously in the area that we chose specifically that we thought had the greatest impact by this specific bridge being built and by those train crossings in that area. So again, I know many of you attended the Mayor's Night Out, and lots of information was passed back and forth, lots of opinions were given back and forth, but those are the specific results from the train survey that we did. Last two points I want to make, on, ending on positive nature. Indiana created a program that they called READY, which is the Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative. It was created specifically by the state to promote strategic investments that will make Indiana a magnet for talent and economic growth, and with that, the state of Indiana allocated $500 million towards that program. I just wanted to report to you that Ann Anderson, our Director of Economic Development, and myself attended on Hammond's behalf the Northwest Indiana Forum's presentation to Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And part of the reason we did that, not just because we support the region, obviously, but because if it is approved, we will receive millions of dollars for our future downtown Hammond station, not the gateway station, not the south station, but the actual station in downtown Hammond. And also, there will be other projects in Hammond that could receive money if the Forum's application is approved. I believe there were 17 regions that applied for these dollars, and there's $500 million, so we'll see how they end up approving and divving up the money, and we'll report back to you when we do find out the response to our submission. But do want to thank publicly the Northwest Indiana Forum for putting together that presentation and including Hammond as part of it. Lastly, I'm happy to report that last week, the Board of Public Works and Safety awarded to the low bidder, Reith Riley, the Downtown Hammond-Homan Avenue redesign project. It's exciting to know that the first steps of what we've been talking about, it seems like forever at this point, for the changes that we're going to make in downtown Hammond per the plan that we had put together by Jeff Speck and our city team, the first steps are actually moving forward. The low bid was awarded, which means when the weather changes, gets a little warmer, and you could start seeing some of the development occur, you're going to start seeing some of the construction in downtown Hammond. And that's one of the first steps for the entire downtown Hammond revitalization plan that we've been talking about for quite a while. That's all I have, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anybody? Councilman Kowinski.
Going back to the insurance, you know, previous years, we've done blood tests around this time of the year. Is the city going to be asking, are we doing that again, I guess is the question? Blood draws.
That is a good question. I'm going to ask if Megan, our City Controller, can come up and answer that for you.
Yes, Councilman, as a part of the wellness discount for your insurance, we will be offering that through Compcare if you weren't able to go to your regular doctor during the year and have blood work done. Amy usually sends that email out in January, and we usually offer dates through February and then into March as well. So we will be doing that again for 2022.
Same sort of panel as previously regarding what they want to test?
No changes from our end. If there are any changes, it's on Compcare's side.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Council, for Mr. Talon?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Hey Phil, can you give us an update on the Columbia Avenue fence?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Tyler. So we are, we have decided, I believe everybody's aware of this, but just to give the, the short version for people that don't recall, obviously, the Columbia Avenue fence is in disrepair. It's been this way for quite a while. It's, the reason it's a complicated project is a long time ago, prior to Mayor Tom being the mayor, I think it was under Mayor DeLo, somehow, it was approved that a fence could be built on residents' property, meaning the city does not own the property that the fence was, was built on. However, the city paid for the fence. I assume that was done appropriately and the right way. However, it makes it very complicated when it goes into disrepair. If the residents aren't able to repair the fence, we have what we have now, which is an eyesore along Columbia Avenue. So we decided as a city, working in conjunction with Councilman Tyler and Mayor McDermott, that the fence is going to be replaced. We went door-to-door, and I shouldn't say we as in me personally, but I know Councilman Tyler, I know Africa Tarver, our Executive Director of Plan and Development was heavily involved. We went door-to-door with, with paperwork, asking them to sign off on giving us permission to replace this fence and put a, a new fence in, in its place. Every resident has signed that paper except for one. So what we decide at this point is to go forward with the project. We will replace the fence for all the residents that have signed off. The one resident that has not signed off, I believe our Corporation Counsel has sent a letter to them, letting them know that if necessary, we will eminent domain a certain portion of the property where the fence needs to be placed. Otherwise, you will notice one hole along the fence. But the money has been allocated, and I know Councilman Tyler is, is paying for a significant portion of that. Mayor Tom is also going to, and the last I heard, the supply, the fence was actually ordered, and Hammond Fence, who's going to do the job, said in about five weeks, as long as the weather doesn't stop them, and we were told they can do it in winter time, you know, in cold weather, the fence construction should begin. Now that is contingent on getting the fence supply. The reason we're waiting five weeks, we're waiting for the fence to actually be delivered to Hammond Fence, and as we all know with COVID, there's been supply issues throughout the country. So that's why we should be about five weeks away from that project starting, which we're very excited to see happen. You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
This question is for Councilman Tyler and Mr. Talon. Is it going to be the same type of fence, or is it a different type of fence for that property, those properties over there?
Glad you brought that up. It is a different fence. So that fence that was put on, put in a long time ago, was also the same fence, I think, that was done at Parish View in property that we did own. And what we found after time is the slats come out quite a bit. It doesn't take much to knock them out. So the new fence is going to be, it's going to look a lot more modern, it's a lot more sturdy, there won't be slats that could be knocked out. So I think, I don't know how to describe it to you without having a picture of it, but it's, it's a nicer-looking fence. It almost gives the look of, of like a brick-type facade, even though it's not, obviously. The way, I think, one of the places we took it from, and if you really want to see it, I think in Munster, right off of Fisher Street, there's a development there where they have the same fence, and I think we kind of stole their concept because we thought it looked really nice. So I think that, hopefully that answers your question for you.
Thank you.
Then along with that, I know part of the new agreement is that when there are issues with the fence, like if, if something does break or if a piece is missing, then Hammond Fence is able to come in and repair that at no cost to the resident. And so we don't, we won't, like Phil said, we won't run into the same issue that we're in now. And the last thing I'll add is that before the end of the year, we were assured that Hammond Fence would go and repair any areas where the fence is missing, so that, right now, what we have is issues where people are kind of walking through people's backyards and using any spots where the fence is missing as a cut-through. And so Hammond Fence is going to repair that until they're able to go in and install the brand-new fence.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thanks. That's a long run of fences. Is any of that fence salvageable or going to be used anywhere else by the city?
I don't think it's, it could be repurposed. I think it's in too much of disrepair at this point. I would hope that it's recyclable at the, you know, least, at the very least, but I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming Hammond Fence would remove the fence and make sure it gets to the appropriate place.
And do you know the total cost of the fence between both shared amounts?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know if Councilman Tyler, you're aware.
Yeah, it's about $180,000.
And then lastly, how are we going to defend this if the State Board of Accounts wants to look at that or the, the feds want to look at that? Because in the past, we were told there's no paperwork substantiating that we actually put that fence up initially. So does this put us in any jeopardy as a city?
What I would tell you is that we had our attorneys look at it prior to going forward with the project, and we were told by our attorneys that what we're doing is the legal, correct way of replacing the fence based on getting to this juncture and how it was done 20-plus years ago. So I, the answer, as I understand it from our attorneys, is we are doing this legally and safely, as far as from a city perspective of making sure we're not doing something that, you know, we're not able to do.
I only bring it up because, as you know, Councilmen spent money inappropriately on private property and went to jail for that.
No, it's, it's a, it's a fair question, and, you know, knowing that we don't have some of the paperwork from, you know, like I'm saying 20 years, but whatever it is, I think it's 20-plus years. It is kind of interesting to, to find out how they put the fence in, in the, in the first place. But again, I've been assured that our attorneys looked at it, and we, we are doing it the appropriate legal way without trying to, you know, have a scandal that other communities have had in the past. We, we obviously don't do that. We're going to make sure that we're doing this the right way. And I, if you drive down Columbia, anybody that goes down Columbia that goes past that fence, if you're not disgusted by, by what you see, then, you know, there's something wrong. We, we had to, we had to figure this out and, and make changes to that fence to improve the entire area. And I think I talked about this last time I was here. Down Columbia, with the water tower finally being repaired, with the old Stardust Bowling Alley finally being repaired and repurposed, Legends has been fixed up. There was an old building there, right next to First Midwest Bank, that has just been renovated and repaired. We're finally seeing what I would consider a more attractive, clean-looking environment and area for commercial and retail. If anything, this fence is one of the final hurdles that needs to be addressed for, for the entire area to, to just look better.
I just raised that because of concern for my colleagues. Don't want them to be in any jeopardy for spending dollars.
Fair, fair point.
Phil, it's my understanding, because I actually asked one of the residents that was there when the fence was put up, and it was my understanding, and I'm, I'm not swearing by this, but it was my understanding, the way it was put up, is when the sidewalk got moved to the curb, that was still part of the right-of-way. That's what the person I talked to said that she recalled is all.
Yeah, I can't speak to it, but that would make sense if that was the case, so.
I, I, don't quote me on it, but I was told that, that by one of the residents, that the way that it was put up again is that was still part of the parkway, I think it's called, but no, it's not, Brian. That's just what the person told me, so I don't.
Yeah, and by the way, I'm, I'm not insinuating that anybody, any administration in the past did something the wrong way. It's just because we don't necessarily have paperwork in front of us to, to show us. You know, we're just going forward the best way that we can in this situation that we're in.
And then the other question I had, when you say Reith Riley in the downtown, are they going to repave the street, or are you talking about like underground stuff too?
It's both. So it's a complete reconstruction of Homan Avenue, but it's also a complete water main. I don't know if I would call it reconstruction, but a water main is being replaced as well. So this is, if you've gone to any of the planning meetings that we've had with Jeff Speck, when we put the pictures up showing all the new landscaping and the, the extended sidewalks, and, you know, the new signage and, and everything else that comes along, the new parking, obviously, th- this project is, is exactly what you saw in some of those visuals when we were presenting throughout the city. So yeah, it's, it's a, it's a complete reconstruction of Homan Avenue.
Are the curbs moving, or are they going to remain where they're at?
I believe some of the curbs are moving. Yeah, I'm not, you know, I don't think it's a full every single curb, maybe Brian might know that, but I believe some of the curbs are moving.
Republican?
Yes.
There, there are going to be some bumpouts at the intersection?
So yes, there will be some bumpouts at some of the intersections, some of it will remain the same. But it's definitely going to put downtown, that downtown corridor in a position where, say, a restaurant wanted to locate there, they would have additional space to have like an outdoor seating area, for example, which you see throughout other downtowns and other communities, you know, throughout the region.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from November 22nd, 2021, to be placed on file, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali, I'm sorry, Councilman Rakos.
Make a motion to pay, play, pay claims dated 12/1/2021, adding claims dated 12/8/2021. Claim number number 5992 through claim 6499 for the amount of $9,355,982.69.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Just a, a public announcement that I received communication that there will be no meeting in December for the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association. Just want that in the record. Thank you.
Anybody else on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Recently, we opened up the registration for the holiday treats giveaway. We just recently closed that registration as we met our capacity. We want to thank all of those that have sponsored from the council to make donations. We also are still accepting donations for new and unwrapped toys that can be dropped off here at the council office, the Civic Center, or for, or First T. The giveaway will be on December 16th at the Hammond Civic Center, and it must have been for Hammond residents that have already signed up, and they must have their IDs and wear a mask and have the children present when they show up on December 16th.
Anybody else have anything on the communications? Any other, any other communications? Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 21-48.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And council as a whole will be bringing out 2146 and 2147. I also have a Capitol Improvements Board report and Crime Watch. Capitol Improvements Board met on December 6th. We approved $16,440 for steam, speed-calming signs on 173rd near Purdue Northwest. We also approved $104,000 for the redesign on Homan Avenue North Approach at Sibley. We also approved $181,132 for Dowling Park and Hessville Drainage Analysis. We also approved $264,000 for Hessville Drainage Improvement Phase One. We also approved $538,191.49 for the Capitol Improvement Board portion of Homan Avenue Phase One Reconstruction. We also approved $300,000 for improvements to Tapper Between Lions and Highland. And just kind of an FYI, Alexander is close to going to bid. I know there are a couple of gentlemen who are very interested in that. That will probably be January or February, and look for construction to begin April, May. The next meeting of the Capitol Improvements Board will be December 20th. The work-study session begins at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. As far as Crime Watch is concerned, there are no meetings for the remainder of December. The first meeting coming up in January will be the Harrison Park Crime Watch. That meets at the VFW on Homan Avenue, providing we don't get some, some snow that would prohibit us from traveling safely. So just watch Facebook for that announcement. And as usual, just with this holiday season, please be aware of your surroundings and always call 911 if you see anything suspicious that just kind of hits you in the gut, because community is not just about me, it's about us. And Merry Christmas to everyone from Crime Watch in Hammond. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Nobody has anything on committee reports. Committee reports is now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading, and final passage.
2146, an ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the city of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1st, 2022.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 2146.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
As we discussed in caucus, I'd like to read the salaries of the elected officials that this ordinance addresses. The mayor from the Civil City receives $100,057. From the Water Department, Sanitary District, and Port Authority, $16,562. from the Water Department, Sanitary District and Port Authority, $16,562. Uh, the clerk receives $90,450 and the council people receive $33,784. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the records, record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
2147, an ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2021 budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2147.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this is an ordinance that we do at the end of every year. It's a, a cleanup ordinance moving, um, uh, funds from one line item to another.
Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
2148, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 2350 White Oak Avenue, Whiting, Indiana, 46394.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for third reading and final passage for 21 dash 48.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
This property was known as Dusty's Tap for many, many years. And when it was purchased by the new owner, they took out the bar and are putting in one more rental unit in the building so that, uh, it will go from four units and a bar to five units and no bar. And so it requires to be reclassified from a C1 local commercial district to an R2 and two-family residential district. So that's what we're approving tonight. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes ordinances. So item number 10, introduction of ordinances, there are none. Item number 11, resolutions.
21R31, a resolution supporting executive order 2145 respecting new employee COVID-19 vaccination policy.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 21R31.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this is, this resolution is simply in support of, uh, mayor's executive order um, stating that any new employees must be vaccinated against COVID-19.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Um, this might be a question for Phil regarding this. Understanding that there are going to be, needing to be vaccinated, new employees and transfer promotions, um, are they still hired into those positions and given a window of time? Or are they not allowed to either be hired or, um, transfer or promote?
I missed the beginning of that question. I'm sorry. Could you repeat it?
I'll repeat it.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I was saying, as for the vaccinations, um, for the employees, the new employees or the transfer employees, um, are they still hired into those positions and given a window? Or are they not given a window at all, um, to be a new hire or transfer or promoted?
They have an opportunity to provide proof to the city that they are fully vaccinated. And it outlines in the exact, in the, uh, resolution, it states exactly what fully vaccinated means. Obviously, that's different depending which vaccination you get or which company you're getting it from. So I think at the time that they're being offered the position, they would need to provide, um, our human resources, uh, department, some sort of proof of their vaccination at that time. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do you need to add to that?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just a follow-up question. So does that mean that we're putting this, uh, this guideline on any of the, like, hiring documents so they know in advance if they want to apply, that they will be asked to show this verification?
It has been added to the application. So when you apply, you will see, uh, it's, I don't know the exact terminology, but there's something on the application that states that you have to supply your, or give us your vaccination, um, record. Um, I do want to bring up, because I know it came up during, uh, caucus, that this does not apply to, uh, employees that through a contract, uh, receive a promotion based on how many years of service they've had. So for example, if a police officer becomes a lieutenant after X amount of years, that still will occur. They do not, in, in that situation, have to, um, provide any type of vaccination um, because that is through a contract that they have with the city. So these are very specifically for new hires and then also people that are looking to transfer uh, to a different department or be promoted, you know, as stated in the resolution.
And what record will the city accept?
Well, um, we can have our attorney, our corporation counsel come up. I, I would, you know, based on anywhere you go now, there's a lot of places where they're asking you for your vaccination status. Typically, you're providing a vaccination card showing the dates that you've been vaccinated. I would assume that would be what we require. I would suppose that we could look at if a doctor provides a note for somebody that's saying this person is fully vaccinated and signed by a, a medical professional.
The reason I ask is because, as you know, some of these cards are forged now. So do we go to the state or do they, will you ask for the state's, uh, certification that you can get online or what, what will be valid here because of? Or does it say right there for you?
Yeah, here's the, so here's the five items listed in the resolution, uh, and executive order. One, the record of immunization from a healthcare provider or pharmacy. Two, a copy of the COVID-19 vaccination record card. Three, a copy of medical records documenting the vaccination. Four, a copy of immunization records from a public health, state or tribal immunity. Gosh, I'm having trouble with that one. Is that why you asked me? You wanted me to say this word? Immunization information system. Or five, a copy of any other official documentation that contains the type of vaccine administered, date of administration and the name of the healthcare professional or clinic site administering the vaccine.
So any one of those or a combination of two out of five?
Any one of the, the five will, will work.
And I assume this, we're talking about both resolutions even though we're on the first one because we brought up the promotion thing too. So is there any questions on either one of these? Is there any further questions? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Rokoff on item A.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R32, a resolution supporting executive order 2147 respecting employee transfer promotion, COVID-19 vaccination policy.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for, uh, final passage of 21R32.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, being that we had overlapping discussions between one resolution and another, um, I have nothing more to add on this one.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R33, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Kevin Clutter as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 21R33.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, Kevin Clutter has served on the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, for several terms and he's looking to continue his service and I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R34, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Lori Zolno as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I ask for final passage of 21R34.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and is there any discuss, by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, Lori Zolno has served, uh, on, uh, the Historic Preservation Committee. And I had talked to her, uh, yesterday. And, uh, Lori, uh, specifically, we talked about some of the things that, uh, the Preservation Committee is working on and, uh, she enjoys it. We talked about some architects and I, I did also talk to another person, so I'll, I'll save a little bit of that. But, uh, she's been developing online presentations, uh, for Hammond High, Clark, Gavitt. And, uh, in the future, the building we're sitting in, uh, which is very, uh, interesting to me. Uh, so I will, uh, ask that you support her for another term. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R35, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Janet S. Evans as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I ask for passage of 21R dash 35.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I, uh, spoke with Janet Evans yesterday and, uh, she has worked, uh, with Lori and other members of, of the Preservation Committee, uh, preserving buildings in Hammond. Uh, we talked about, uh, library in Hessville, uh, working on, uh, some billboards. Uh, I talked about that earlier. And of course, uh, they're working on, uh, preservation of Morton and the landmark around Calumet Park, uh, near the data center. Uh, the landmark that, you know, I remember seeing. Uh, so in addition to the online presentations, uh, Ms. Evans shared with me that a lot of people working day to day, uh, are worried about putting food on the table and, you know, keeping the, the wolf from the door, uh, aren't concerned about the history of Hammond. But we have a rich history and, and the committee works very hard on, on discovering things and, uh, pre- presenting, especially online, uh, the workings of, including the building we're sitting in. So I would ask for your support to reaffirm Janet Evans' second term.
Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R36, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Christopher P. Jones as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson. The clip part down.
I move for final adoption of 21R dash 36.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, Chris Jones, uh, has, has been on Preservation Committee for quite a while. Uh, he's a former business owner in the city and currently a realtor. And, uh, I ask that you support him, uh, for a se- another term.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
21R37, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Kristen Hill as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I ask for passage of 21R dash 38.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I, uh, also, uh, Kristen Hill, uh, has been, uh, with the human resources, uh, and I'm asking for your support in- and I'm asking for your support in a, in a second term, uh, another term. Uh, and I thank all of the people I've sponsored tonight for serving, you know, uh, but before I do that, I would like to, uh, say that, you know, people go to, uh, Human Relations Commission for a variety of, of reasons, and, uh, if they have trouble with their landlord and, uh, any other, uh, where they feel they're discriminated against, and, and that's where, generally where they go. Uh, and I, I think that, uh, having her on this committee, uh, is necessary, and, uh, I would ask that you support her for another term. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Is this a paid position for Ms. Hill?
Does anybody know if it's a paid position? Human relations part.
I know that in general, it, there are some, uh, there are some per meeting, uh, stipulations, but on the whole, they're, they're not very much.
Megan or Phil, do you want to address that, if you know the answer?
Well, I was just told that it's, it's supposedly twenty-five dollars a meeting that they get paid, so, and they're, they clear less than that, so I don't know if that answers the question that you're asking.
That's what Ms. Hill would receive, then?
I believe so.
Okay, thanks.
You may approach the bench, Megan.
Mr. President, for clarification purposes, um, this is the Human Relations Commission, correct? So according to this, it's actually two hundred dollars per meeting. The twenty-five dollars a meeting is for different groups, not this one. So, yeah, it's actually two hundred dollars a meeting. I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Twenty-one R thirty-eight. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Yvonne Roca as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for final passage of, uh, twenty-one R thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yvonne has been a member of the Humans Relations Commission for years, and she contributes a lot to the commission and is an asset to the city. I ask my colleagues to please support her reappointment.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes resolutions under new and, uh, item number twelve, new and unfinished business. The notice of intent to consider goes away with the passage of twenty-one forty-eight. Has anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anyone have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I should have announced this earlier, but, uh, in connection to Councilwoman Alexander's announcement about the holiday treats giveaway, the Food Bank confirmed, uh, late last week that they're going to partner with us too. So the first one hundred families that attend that event will get a box of food for the holidays. Uh, so once again, the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana is providing food for the holiday treats giveaway, and the first one hundred families that are attending will get food for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, just, anything else on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I'd like to wish, uh, everyone a happy holiday season, uh, and a happy new year, and by holidays, I want to include everyone that celebrates it at different times. So thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
From all of us, happy holidays.
Does anybody else have anything on unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Also just want to acknowledge, uh, a special guest in the audience, Mr. William Gotwin, who is a councilman in Gary, uh, is here to, to visit and just kind of witness how we do things, and, um, would like to talk to some of our IT department individuals after the meeting to kind of get a sense of how we do the hybrid meetings as they try to figure out if they want to make a change in Gary too. So I just want to acknowledge him, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Anything else on the new and unfinished business? Anything else on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. New and unfinished business is closed. Um, Jared, you're up. Under public expression. Hey, while you're still happy, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Same to you. Well, I'm still happy. I'm always happy. That's why I come here. Spread the joy. It's rah-la-la-la, huh? Yeah, George Steyer, Robert Stale. Uh, my main reason for coming up and, uh, mentioning this is more an alert, more so than a complaint, although it kind of, uh, you know, uh, it's an ambivalent state, but it, it's not ambivalent, ambiguous, kind of takes, uh, never mind, I'm getting too far ahead here. Anyway, um, I live in the first district, as you well know, uh, or may not know, and perhaps I'm spoiled, but we're accustomed to having the trains run on time. Specifically, this particular train is Republic Recycling. Um, last week, with the high winds anticipated to be coming in, I don't know, beginning Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and stuff, and given the conditions of collection, which means we cannot put our recyclables into plastic, into plastic bags, like garbage bags, to keep them together. Everybody, they want them loose so that when they dump them and all that kind of stuff. Uh, it presented a, a, a problem. Uh, the problem was, we were supposed to get picked up on Monday, and nobody came. Tuesday, nobody came. I hopped on the phone, I called, uh, I called them, then I called the city, and they told me to call them back, and I called, uh, uh, recycling, and, uh, they said, "Yeah, you're right, it was scheduled for that." And I says, "Well, yeah, obviously, I wouldn't be calling you." And I says, "What can you do?" He says, "Well, I can, you know, uh, send an email to the boss." And then I, then they told me at the city to call them back, so I called them back, told them what, uh, Republic, uh, said. And finally, I got it picked up on Wednesday just before the winds hit, because we are, the, the way our, our block runs north to south, and it's a wind tunnel, and the winds kick up pretty good in there. And I was not about to go chasing down the alley after my little recyclable, so I've done that before, I won't do it anymore. But, um, I just, when I called there, nobody really had an answer. I think somebody, they claim, I think somebody from the city is my best guess. Uh, they were the most reasonable about it and seemed more, they seemed more, uh, uh, willing to take the initiative. I think somebody came out from the city and just picked it up and, and took it away, because nobody else was taking it. I'm thinking, "What, you people?" And there was a lot. It wasn't just me. There was just a lot of stuff in that alley, and I go, "Oh, my God." And when the winds did come, every, a lot of stuff was strewn throughout the alley, garbage cans and everything, and it's like, I guess people are not watching the news. But I did want to alert you to that, and, because it was bizarre. Uh, you know, Republic's missed it a couple times over the years, not much, you know. I'm not going to say they're a bad contractor, or a bad contractor, but this was just, it was just like, "Ah, we'll get you if we can. If we don't get you, eh, we'll get in the buy-and-buy," and nobody had an answer, nothing. And, uh, I just thought it was bad business, and I was a little upset by it, mainly because of the weather, and, and we can't bag our stuff. If I could bag our stuff, I couldn't care less, because I'll, you know, I'll chase the bag, but I ain't going to chase e, every individual item. So I just thought, I wanted to create a record here that they are on the record with this, and in the event, uh, when they're up for contract renewal, this can be a mark against their name. All right, happy holiday.
You're trying to get on Santa's nice list, aren't you? Happy holiday. Um, there's nobody else signed up. I did get a text from Gary and Sylvester. They're in Florida, and they said they want to wish everybody on the council a Merry Christmas. Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Seconded, Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
And Happy New Year.